Okay, here we go, folks. The February 10th meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board will come to order. Chair recognizes Mr. James Harris for our invocation.
Let us pray. Most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that we can meet for our February 10th Rockingham County Planning Board meeting. Lord, just be with us tonight. Help us to review the cases being presented. Help us to make decisions that be beneficial to the requesting party and also the neighbors of the community. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. The next item on the agenda is approval of the January 13th Planning Board meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
I'm second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. The vote is five to zero to accept the minutes as written. The following are the guidelines for speakers. Any and all persons who would like to speak regarding any case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster prior to the beginning of the meeting. Additionally, each speaker must be recognized by the presiding board member prior to speaking. When recognized, each speaker must approach the podium and state their name and address before speaking. Unless otherwise specified, all testimony, evidence, and comments should be directed to the board chairperson or presiding board member. Please remember that it is expected that many will wish to speak about this case. Once speakers begin, if you agree with an argument already presented in favor or against, please practice the courtesy of indicating with a show of hands or a short statement of support rather than presenting the same argument again. Groups are also encouraged to send a representative to speak on their behalf. This will allow more citizens the opportunity to be heard. End of round one. The following are the guidelines for the cases. Each case will be presented to the board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentations, those who have signed up to do so will be granted the opportunity to speak against or in support of the proposal. If needed, the board chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. After hearing from the public, the applicant will be given an opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motion, and voting procedures.
Did you adopt the revised agenda when you adopted the minutes? I'm not sure if you... There is an item that was advertised and then withdrawn. Would you mind just doing a consent agenda approval to accept the withdrawal of that case?
And what is the case number we're withdrawing?
We're withdrawing case 2020-002. And for those of you who got postcards, the case that we're hearing is 2001, but we're dropping 2002.
Okay. I move that we accept the revised agenda.
A second.
All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion has been made and seconded to withdraw case number 2020-002 is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Staff will now present case number 2020-001.
Case 2020-01 is a request for rezoning. It's a 1.2 acre parcel on Cavalry Road. The request is to rezone from residential protected to light industrial condition district. The applicant has offered conditions, restricted conditions in your packet, as you see in your packet. Realize that these conditions can be modified if the applicant agrees and if additional conditions would mitigate issues that you feel are problematic or supportive of the case. Adjacent properties are zone residential agriculture and residential protected with a light industrial parcel at the end of the road. Yep, here we go. The property is located in Mayo Township, in the urban transition area of the land use plan. Urban transition area is characterized with lands being developed for urban purposes but do not yet have usual urban services, lands necessary to accommodate population growth over the next 20-year period, and which can be readily serviced with usual urban services, generally free from severe physical limitations for development. I'm sorry that my... Okay. This is a habit that we've gotten into of putting this chart. The land use plan has purposes, characteristics, the type of services, and residential density for each of the land classes that we have. And this just gives you a little bit more detail about what's intended for this land use class. The property is located on Cavalry Road. And this slide shows the property itself with an aerial view. Conditions offered by the applicant for the members of the audience. I know this slide is difficult to see. I don't know if I can... Okay. I think it's about as well as I can go. So the applicant has crossed off uses that would not be permitted should the property I know this is a little bit awkward, but for the sake of the audience. Some of the uses that could be allowed but would require additional public hearing are listed under uses requiring special use permit. Are there questions for me about the location of the property or where it's...
Yes, I have one. Cavalry Road, does that dead end at the...
It does.
Other light industrial?
It does, right at the end of... The terminus of the road is a property zoned light industrial. Since this is a conditional zoning, it would... I advise you to pay more attention to the applicant's presentation so that you can get more detail about what his intentions are.
Does anyone have any other questions for staff at this time?
I don't. And I'm available. You can call me up again afterward.
Okay. Is Mr. Kidd here?
Yes, sir.
Would you please take the podium? And for record, please state your name and address.
My name is Stephen Kidd. I live on 221 Acorn Roads, Donville.
And what is it that you would like the Planning Board to know about your application?
I run a small painting business, usually residential, commercial. And I've kind of outgrown where I'm at. I need a place to store my equipment and actually just work out of that area if I
Are you planning on erecting a building there?
I do. I have a 30-by-40 building that I will be erecting if suitable. And actually, in the process, started cleaning up the lot because it has a lot of trees on it. And we found some other things on it. And I've addressed that with the State of North Carolina today. And we're moving forward on getting everything straight, moved, and cleaned up. That's my main objective, is to clean up the whole... It's got a fence all the way around this lot, and it's a six-foot chain link fence. And my objective is to clean it all up and make it look presentable and eventually have my business there.
Okay. And do you have other employees that would be in and out of that location?
No, sir. I have one employee that works with me full-time, and I have a part-time employee.
Okay. And what types of material will you be storing at the building?
It's really not storing material, it's storing equipment. I don't deal with a lot of hazardous or nothing like that. Most of the paint that I deal with is waterable and acrylic. I don't deal with the... In the old days, it used to be a lot of solvents and oil-based paints, but today's technology, we don't even fool with much oil base at all. So that's... I don't even like dealing with it, to be honest with you.
Can't say blame you there.
Yeah, it messes up your mind a little bit.
Mr. Kidd, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
Are you planning to live on this parcel of land at all?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. I have... I live over on 221 Acorn Road. It's about a mile away. I've been living there for 18 years. I built my home there with my family.
Okay. And how many vehicles do you think will... Or what kind of equipment? Again, can you be a little more specific? Will there be vehicles?
I have my trucks, and of course, I have two or three trucks that I use. It depends on what I'm doing. I have trailers, 16-foot flatbed trailers. I also have an aerial lift, which is a 35-foot boom lift that you actually drive around on job sites. I'll have it stored there. And I have spoken to a man that would like to rent part of the land, but we haven't signed nothing. But he has 24-foot box trucks. I don't know if you're familiar with there's a straight truck? And he said he don't have no place to park his trucks. And I said, "Well, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it, because I don't know what's going to be allowed to do that."
Right. So you're talking... You're actually contemplating subletting this property?
Yes, ma'am, if it's possible. I'm not... He has a business where he takes his trucks out early in the morning, and it's gone all day, then he comes back in the evening. But we haven't... Nothing's been installed. He hadn't... You know, he's just mentioning it to me. We haven't said that we were going to do this or not.
Right. And I'll just clarify. I think Mr. Kidd would be purchasing the property, so he would be leasing a piece of it, right? Not subletting?
Right. It'll be renting it from me, you know?
Just make sure that you...
Because he has nowhere to park his vehicles.
Okay. So you don't currently own this piece of property?
I do own this property, 100 percent.
Excuse me, excuse me, Stephen. The bottom line is that he owns it and wouldn't be subletting it.
Yeah, I own the property, but I have a business associate that wants to rent a percentage of it.
I'm sorry. He would be leasing it, not subletting it.
Leasing it or renting, however you want to say it.
Got it. My mistake.
How many trucks does he have?
He has three 24-foot box trucks. And this whole area of mine, I don't know if you can see, it's got a lot of growth and trees and debris on this property. And my intention is to whack it clean. And we're going to gravel, and I plan on, you know, spending some time and money up there because this is where I want my business. And I've already been in business for 24 years, you know, in the area, and I plan on continuing it. I just need me a place to run my business.
So other than this notification that the neighbors got about this hearing, or not hearing, this meeting tonight, have you had any contact with the neighbor, your potential neighbors?
I have spoken to maybe everyone on Cavalry Road, and I've spoken to one gentleman on Rogers Road. And everyone I've spoken to has been positive.
But you haven't spoken to anyone on Eden Road?
Not on Eden Road, no, ma'am. Well, I do have a friend of mine, John Thompson. He lives maybe eighth quarter of a mile down the road now. He does know about what I'm doing. His dad's been in that area, you know, for a long time, so...
So any of the business activities that you're talking about here, would they involve... You said you would not have any hazardous materials, but would there be any noxious fumes or noise associated with it?
Not that I'm worried. No, ma'am. I don't plan on... I don't want nothing hazardous to begin with because it's too much of a hassle. I don't even want to touch it anyway because I've had dealings in my younger days with that. No, I don't plan on... I'm not going to be there all hours of the night. I hope to just come in and out. And sometimes I work on projects, and it requires a big area to work on. Like, when I do cabinets or whatever, I've got to lay them out somewhere so I can work on them. I need an area for that, and I don't have it where I'm at. And this is my... My main objective is to have a shop I can work in when it's raining or doing whatever.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Kidd?
Yes, you mentioned, I believe, it's a 30-by-40 building?
Yes, sir.
Is it wooden structure?
No, sir. It's a steel fab building. It's with eye beams and all.
Okay. You said this business was a painting business, is that right?
It's a painting and a restoration. I do a lot of light carpentry repairs, homes and stuff, so forth. I don't just paint.
And you won't be dealing with any chemicals or flammable or...
No. Every once in a while, I deal with oil-based paint, and it's... You get a gallon of mineral spirits, it's about all you'll ever see.
Right.
And I can usually, you know, use that to clean your brushes and thin the paint and so forth. But far as barrels and firegowns, no. I don't even want to touch that stuff, to be honest with you.
Do you have any kind of water system there or disposal system?
I know there is water and two septic tanks on the property that was already there, previous, before I even moved there. And I've found, located one of the septic tanks, and I've found a water spigot. Now, how... You know, if it's a well or a damn river, I don't know yet. That was just... Charlie had told me there were two trailers there at one time, that somebody lived on that property. And that was probably 35 years ago or so. I don't know. And...
Well, you know, paint cleanups and things like that, how would it probably be disposed of? Into the septic tank or to...
Paint cleanups, like, far as... I don't use nothing but water-based products. They're all waterborne.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I don't... Anytime you use... The paints I use generally are... They have industrial products now that are waterborne. They even paint bridges with a water-based epoxy now.
So you don't have anything where you need acetone, things like that?
No, I don't. Like I say, I don't... No, that's beyond... I don't even want to touch that stuff, if you know what I mean.
Right.
No. Most stuff I deal with is painting walls and ceilings, and they're all water-based paints.
Okay.
It's just stuff like that, you know?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of questions also.
Sure.
When you access this property, are you planning on accessing it off of Rogers Lane or off of Cavalry?
It has two gates already on Cavalry, and that's the only way I'm going to come in and out the property. There are... I don't know how far the land goes back to Rogers Road, but there's a fence back there, and there's trees on both sides of this fence. And I've spoken to Chuck Yarborough. He is on the fire department, and he's the chief of the fire department there in Leesville. And when I cut the trees, he said it would be right to cut all the trees right there against Rogers Road because they have problems coming in and out of that property during the ice and snow and bad weather because they fall in the road. Now, I haven't said I'm going to do that, but me and him have talked about it. But the only way coming in and out is the two gates that are on Cavalry Road.
Okay. And then your 30-by-40 building that you're going to erect, what part of the property will you locate that on?
It would be closer to Cavalry Road.
On the northern part or the southern part?
It'd be, I guess, whichever part's closest. I'll be about 12 feet from the fence.
Okay. More closer to Eden Road or on the opposite end?
I'm going to try to put it right in the middle of the property, actually, sir, so I can drive through both ends because it has openings on both ends.
Gotcha. And then a couple of minutes ago, you mentioned there was other things on the property that you're working on getting cleaned up with the state. What kind of other things?
There's some barrels and stuff that was left by the previous owner, and I was notified by the county that that needs to be addressed. And I had the... Actually, I had two people from the State of North Carolina Environmental Agency. We met today at 1:00. A lady from Charlotte and a man from Guilford County. We all met and looked at what was up there. All that was up there that Dave told me was just barrels that looked... They had been there for hours. They're crushed. And whatever was there was a solid, and that I have to clean it up on my own, which I was going to do anyway. And it says if there's anything solid there, they have to notify Rockingham County and get rid of it in the correct manner.
Do we know what kind of solids it is?
They didn't know. They were with the state. They said it might have been some dried-up paint at one time, but I don't... The way they talked, they didn't. They didn't see where it was a problem.
And I'm in touch with them as well, James and board. Any kind of... Of course, this is apart from the rezoning, that situation. Any development that he did would have to... Would not be done before this was addressed and remedied if there was anything to it. But I've spoken to the folks from the state as well, from DEQ, and it sounds like Mr. Kidd is on it.
So will Deener do any type of survey to see if there's anything...
That's who... They call DEQ now.
That's who was down there today?
Yeah.
That's who was there, yeah. Okay. It was Deener.
And the last question I had was, you leasing that property to a friend of yours with a box trailer, what part of the property will he locate his...
Right now, I'm just looking at, when you pull in, it'd be on the right side, closer to Eden Road. But all he's going to do is just back them in there at night and leave them overnight if he does that.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have another question or two. Mr. Kidd, do you know how many neighbors actually live? How many folks will neighbor... Be your neighbors that actually live on that road?
On Cavalry Road?
Yes.
I have one neighbor on the left side of me, and the house that is on the right, it's vacated. I think the people have passed. But I think there's five different families, four or five families on Cavalry Road that I know of. Now, I'm not sure about Rogers. I know, like I said, I've spoken with Chuck, so that's, you know...
So you don't know how many people are behind you then on Rogers?
I do not, ma'am.
But you think there's four or five families on Cavalry Road?
All right, if I'm not mistaken, one, two, three. I know four, I'm pretty sure. One man has deceased. And there.
Here.
Eight different parcels.
Yeah, I know there's a place, somebody's home right behind my property. Well, there's, I think, one or two trailers there. I'm not sure. I rode by it, I think, yesterday or the day before, just looking. But I'm not familiar. I haven't spoken to those folks.
And this is... This is a question for staff.
The Greens hashed buildings. Do we know whether they are homes or other types of buildings?
Those are residences. Not all of them?
Not all of them are residents.
Right, right. But my... And I can look in here. My recollection of it was that there aren't any standalone storage buildings or everything is either a... Is some sort of single-family residence, whether it's a modular, stick-built, or manufactured.
Okay.
I may... Phillip's checking it out, too, I can tell. See if he gets their best...
I've already been looking.
Just a question to satisfy my curiosity. This question is for staff. What is the nature of the light industrial property at the terminus of...
That property was... Is owned by an owner of a construction business, and that property was originally zoned so that he could operate his business out of the property and store his trucks and equipment and so forth. I don't know that it's active at this point, but it's still zoned that. Julie, do you have anything more to offer?
Yes, that was Charlie Hall's. He ran Sears Construction out of there many, many years ago.
Oh, he's over on...
Yeah, so he's now... He's now 14. And I don't know what he does, what he uses that piece of property for, but originally that he ran... He did the construction company out of it. But he's... He moved out a long, long time ago.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kidd?
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
Hours of operation, is it typically eight to five-ish? I mean, you know, is it anything in the evenings that you'll be doing? I mean, on a regular basis?
Yeah. I generally go to work about 7:38, and I try to get home before, but sometimes it's different. Now, I might be out there fooling with some projects that I might have, you know, but it would be some... The doors would be shut, and it wouldn't be...
So not a lot of after-hours activity, latency?
No, sir. I'm going to try not to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kidd.
Thank you.
We will invite you back for rebuttal after we hear from the people who have signed up to speak. Rocky Darnell? And for the record, sir, please state your name and address.
Rocky Darnell, 230 Rogers Lane.
And what would you like to know, the board to know?
The aerial view that you're showing right now, my driveway connects right into the backside of the fence. And the neighbor is beside of me, Al Williams. He died about three months ago. He had kidney disease and died from it. And just above that, I don't know the man... Can't remember the man's name. Just above that property there, the gentleman died there with the same disease. All right? At the end of Rogers Road, before you get to the Yarboroughs, her mother or father, he is dying from the same disease that... From the future businesses that's been right there in that area. And below that area, and myself, I've had prob... Health issues and everything. They have... Our three of them, there's two that passed away, and one's working hard now because of the water and the pollution. It's runoff between the Williams and my property. The valley runs right straight down through there, and I have an underground spring, and it runs straight into it. And it goes straight into my well. My well goes to my neighbor, and goes to my other neighbor here. Then it goes below to the Yarboroughs and all them. All it's tied into one string, underground. And it all is fed off of those two properties right there.
Which two properties?
Okay, the one that he's wanting to buy is on Cavalry Road and Rogers Lane, the 1.6, 1.3 acres. And at the very end of the road was where he used to have another business there that dealt with a lot of chemicals and rubbers and all that stuff. At Charlie, he used to do the...
Can you describe the... They have this map as well.
Okay. I'm going to walk over to the map and just show it on.
All right.
This line right here, coming straight down, that's my driveway. It's going straight into the back of the property here. All right? The Williams that live here that has passed away, they're straight in front of that. That's dead in front of their house. Mrs. Williams cannot be here. She has a health issue, and she cannot be here. I've talked to her son. He has to live with her now. And she's having a lot of issues and all going on around. The Yarboroughs live... This is the other property here that we're talking about. I'm thinking also it has, like, he grew a building or something. Yarboroughs live here, and Chuck Yarborough, them live here on this property. All right, my neighbors here, they live directly on this property right here. And between the man that lived right here in this corner right here that joined that property, he has passed away from the same disease this man's passed away from. Now, this man lives on this property, just having the same issues right now, kidney disease, all that stuff, from the same... Three people in the same area. Throw rock, and I'm going to skip one. And I, like I said, I've had health issues, and I don't know if it contains any of the problems... problems I've had or anything like that. And also, the tax value, all right, he's wanting to know about the Rogers Lane. The Rogers Lane is against his fence. Those trees that are over the Rogers Lane, there's a sixty-foot right away coming down through there. We're split in the middle of it. It has a thirty-foot on that right away, his property line actually is in our driveway, on that backside fence. The trees that have grown up there, they have failed both ways. His trees that's down on the fence, fences tore up back on the backside, it had to be repaired. If he was to put a business in there like that, how much value is it gonna make our properties more worth more, or is it gonna make it less by the, the things that people can check on and see what people have died from in that area?
Well, sir, if, are you, are you alleging that?
Over the years, now, I'm not saying his business right now, the years that the chemicals have been up there and all these.
Have you had your water tested?
Yes, sir, had water tested. And they just come back and say, oh, your water's fine to drink. They haven't tested the chemicals yet.
Well, if, if they're saying, if they can make a statement that the water's potable means drinkable, then they've had to test for chemicals.
Well, I don't know how far they test, 'cause I don't do that type of stuff.
Yeah, we, we need some evidence of some kind to be in a position to deny this rezoning for that reason.
I don't have a problem with him wanting to have a business in there or anything like that, I'm all for it. But the impact in years and our property values and stuff, is it gonna make it more? Is it gonna make our properties less? Are we gonna have problems later in years? 'Cause I know he's saying he wants to do cabinet work and do other stuff. I've built my home, I've done other construction jobs, I'm a GMC, General Motors Technician and Chrysler Technician. I am basically started into my retirement. All my neighbors around me are right into their retirement and everything. And we don't have the funds or the money to have to keep spending out on health issues because of chemicals and stuff that's in the air. And I know what paint fumes, I know sand and dust, and I know.
Well, he's also said that he intends to do these projects in, within the confines of the building, inside the building. He's not gonna be doing them outside.
But you, I carry the trash out and put it in a dumpster. And dumpster's not always guaranteed when they dump it, is it gonna pour out on the ground?
Well, I'm, I'm not knowledgeable enough about the aromatics of the type of paints that he uses, how far those will transmit.
I've painted cars, I've painted houses, I, I know exactly what his type of work he's doing. I have no problem with that. I'm all for him to, to be able to go on and have a better life for himself and make some employees have a better life. But is it gonna resitute the neighborhood for this? Because my driveway's gonna be passing by his property every day when I go in and out, or people come in and out from the neighborhood. They're gonna be looking at the backside of a dirty building with stuff just parked all around. I know how things add up and they break down, they just get parked. I know how it builds up. 'Cause I've, I've had to clean my property off because of them.
I have a couple of questions. Mr. Darnell?
Yes.
So, just so that I can get a better understanding of, um, what's happening in your, in your neighborhood. So you're saying that at nine eighty-four, Eden Road, Ronnie Morris died?
Ronnie, yes, Ronnie.
And then at two forty, Rogers, another person passed away?
Well, that was John Fairbanks, so that was totally different.
Okay.
Okay, but it was Al, Al Williams, he just passed away in October from the same issue.
And then you're saying that, um, who else in proximity?
Uh, what's Yarborough? It's Shelby and Ronnie. Ronnie is Yarborough, I believe.
It's not Yarborough, 'cause that was in laws.
Yeah, it might be Schofield, Ronnie Schofield.
Okay, Ronnie Schofield.
And right now, he's, the kids are shutting down on him.
Okay, so, um, can you tell me approximately, although I can pretty much see it here, can you tell me approximately how many people in proximity of your house live there, that this is their home?
My wife and I.
So, and you have neighbors who live there as well?
Yes.
You're pretty much surround, it looks like you're pretty much surrounded by people that live in their, live in their homes.
Yes, ma'am. And the, um, water sources from that, the stream that comes out from under my ground go into the backside to the trailer parking, and they redo their water system, sewer system, and it runs back into the...
Where do you get your water?
Uh, from oil.
Okay, so you have oil water.
We've tried to get the city to come in there, but they won't, they won't take a road over or do nothing.
So, and that's on Rogers, um, but you don't know about Eden Road or Calvary Road?
Uh, I know about...
Well, I do.
Just Rogers Lane, that's, that's all I know.
Actually, I do.
Well, with, with all due respect, sir, uh, I don't think, because his building has not even been built yet.
No.
No land's been cleared. We can't establish any kind of causal link between all of these deaths from a similar disease or, uh, to what he's, what he's gonna do there.
Ronnie Morris died from pancreatic cancer.
Okay.
Yes.
So, uh, I think you might have, whether or not you have any other legal course of action as far as your water supply, if, if you are attributing all of this to the water, I don't know. I'm not an attorney and I can't give you legal advice on what to do.
Have you contacted the Department of Environmental Health?
I contacted them today and they're supposed to get back with me, with, they said, they said it'd be a day or two.
I will, uh, their office is very near to mine, so I'll follow up with them as well.
Okay.
The, the initial call would need to come from you as the property owner, but I'll, I'll follow up on it also.
But should we, should we, uh, go ahead and grant his application, approve his application? In the interim, you could have your testing done, and you can als, always present this same argument to the county commissioners at their meeting on March sixteenth. Because whatever this board does, final approval rests with the county commissioners.
All right, I have another request on the same property. If this does go through, I would like to have a privacy fence put across the back there where every time I pass by, I don't see all of them.
Or he could just leave the trees that are on the other side of his fence?
Well, they're all falling down on his fence.
I, I'm sure that, he, he has to submit a site plan anyway, that, uh, has to have an NC DLT-approved driveway, and, uh, there's other conditions that go with his being granted a zoning change.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're very welcome, sir. Ken Darnell? Did your, did your husband essentially say what you wanted to say?
Yes, I'm Penny Darnell, 230 Rogers Lane. My main concern is our property value decreasing and the look of it with the privacy fence. I didn't know if he could maybe do that for us, so we don't have to see a business, 'cause it, it's really royal, rural out there and beautiful, and the look of it, we don't want it to diminish. So, that's basically it.
I have a question for Mr. Darnell, um, and I didn't ask Mr. Darnell. What does your house face?
It faces Calvary.
It faces Calvary. So when you look out your front porch, what, what would you, what do you see and what would you see?
Well, from our yard, you can see the back of our neighbor's house, or you can see up the driveway that would face his property.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Ms. Darnell, I'm sorry, correct me if I'm wrong from just looking at the aerial map, but is there still some, some land that's on there with Rogers from the driveway that there's still already a buffer? 'Cause it looks like...
There's...
There's still some trees that would be actually in between your property and, and Mr. Kidd's property. Is that correct?
I think so.
Okay.
I have another question. Mr. Darnell, what, um, so Rogers Lane, um, this is not a paved road?
No, I wish it was.
So, we're talking pretty, it's pretty much a gravel driveway, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What about Calvary, is that paved?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mister or Mrs. Baldwin, am I pronouncing it correctly?
I'm Mrs. Baldwin.
Okay.
My husband's in firm, so it's very difficult for him to walk.
Oh, you can speak for both of you. Please tell us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Lynn Baldwin, 250 Rogers Lane, Stoneville.
And what is it that you'd like the planning board to know about Mr. Kidd's application?
We live right next to the Darnells. Their driveway goes past our property, and they're right next to us on the back of my The property is a very, very rural area. There isn't anything there that would lead anybody to believe that there was any kind of, uh, business or anything like that. The area is extremely rural. The property in question here that Mr. Kidd has at this particular time is wrecked. And I have contacted the EPA and the DEQ and talked with both of those people, and they are looking into this particular situation. I have horses. I take care of abused and neglected horses. Now, these horses, when they come to me, are in dreadful condition, dreadful condition. I get them from all over the United States. I just recently had one from Maryland. And they are, the respiratory and the grass that they eat, so their digestive systems are affected by anything that is in the air or anything that is on or under the ground. These horses have been tortured, you name it, it's happened. I don't want to add insult to injury by having those horses breathing air that we are not sure of, let alone the well system, which is also hooked to the Darnells. And our well is right in the pastures. We live in the middle of a pasture. And there's absolutely no reason to, to think for one minute that even though he's doing cabinets or paints of any kind, and I'm sure each and every one of you at one time or another has used spray paint or has used some kind of paint. And I can tell you, and when I have used them, they are aerosol and they do go everywhere. There's no way to keep it enclosed. Uh, if you'll think back, I'm sure you've all seen the Mako commercials on television, they have respirators, special clothing, all sorts of things to keep those fumes away. We have a lovely forest-type area to place a building at thirty to forty feet square in a few, within a few lots from us would absolutely destroy the effects of the neighborhood, not to mention the possibilities of the air and the water. It is very, very dangerous. Horses have a very, very delicate, I know because they're very large, people think that they have, they're very, very strong in, in health and, and their digestion. That is a, not a truth. They are very, very easily damaged. You can damage a horse by moving that horse from one place to another, not, not even talking about food or water or the, the air that they breathe. And I don't want anything that will interfere with me getting those horses back on their feet, if at all possible, and then being able to retrain them so that they are pleasure horses, and then have them adopted out under the state laws of North Carolina for abused and neglected horses, which is...
How many do you have?
Right now, I have two. Tomorrow, I may have four. I never know. You get a telephone call, you say hello, they say, we're bringing you two abused horses, they'll be there within two hours. Or sometimes you're lucky enough to have three days, two days, twenty-four hours. And all of these things that seem very minor, and I understand that they do seem very minor, but when it comes to horses, that's a completely different thing. I've talked to my veterinarian, I've talked to my farrier, and all of the things that are in the ground and all of the things that are in the air can hurt and kill horses. And I have already taken every precaution to make certain that there are nothing, nothing at all that we do ourselves to hurt these horses. We don't put any kind of pesticides or any kind of, uh, chemicals in the air, aerosols that could be used in the air that could be taken in by these horses to hurt them.
Where do you shelter the horses?
I shelter them on my property.
Do you have a barn?
It is a run-in shed and a barn, so they can get in, out of the weather, and they can come and go at will. Some of these horses have been left in stalls for years.
Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Baldwin?
Capella.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for hearing me.
Just reminding you, as you listen to, to people, that, um, owners, what he said he plans to do with the property is still, unless it's conditioned to that specific, uh, use, you still have a zoning district that you're looking at.
We have one more person who signed up to speak. It looks like SD, is it Kim Key?
That's me, probably. If the key is ever...
Oh, 221 Acorn Road?
That's me, sir. My hand, I didn't do best.
All right, well, that concludes the speakers that have signed up to speak. All right, well, that concludes the speakers that have signed up to speak.
Paul, I think there's
Yes, sir.
This is my husband, Baldwin. He signed up.
Okay, sir.
I guess you could gather, my lady here is a horse person.
We do.
The only thing that nobody has said so far is that the people that owned that property previous paid with the industrial paint storage place up there. And there were a lot of 55-gallon drums on that property. When the EPA guy talked to me today, he said a lot of them were just broken, and they looked like solid waste in them, that there was no liquid waste left. They also recommended that we have our well water checked. And my lady called the county to have the well water tested. Lady
Angel Wyatt.
Angel Wyatt advised that we could have that done, but we had to have it done by chemical at a hundred and some dollars for each one. We don't know what chemicals to test for. So, the EPA man, when I talked to him today, Dan Gridner, Dan Gridner told me that what was solid waste, they didn't know anything with it, but liquid waste, that's what they did. But that the county would certify that property as being clear of contamination. I didn't hear anybody say anything about getting the county certification on that.
Well, he's already applied for that. Mr. Kidd, Mr. Kidd has already applied for that. He had a meeting today with DEQ and EPA out at his property.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. They called me after the meeting. But what we want to know is, is anything going to go on that property prior to the survey and certification?
I doubt it.
No, knowing, you know, the fact that we're aware that there's an issue there, and they had called me to be aware of it, that would be taken, no development would be able to be allowed before it was cleared.
And the other thing you have to remember is that before he can put a structure on that property, he's got to meet certain conditions, like having an NC DOT-approved driveway. He's got to have the property set backs. What was the other condition in here?
You'd be thinking about buffers, landscape buffers.
Yeah, buffers, oh, and he's got to have a site plan. All that takes time. I mean, this is not going to happen next week.
Yeah, I understand this, sir.
Plus, if any of the information that DEQ or the EPA comes up with that would be detrimental to putting a building on that property, the commissioners have the final say on whether or not we approve or disapprove this zoning request.
Well, and even the zoning can't be related to what's in the ground. It has to be, and it's actually unfair for it to be related. The zoning should be considered independently, with the understanding that development will be dependent on what's in the ground.
Yeah. So, does that answer your concern?
No, I just didn't understand what she just said, that it can be rezoned without being approved?
Yeah, at this point, we're just looking at rezoning. He's not being given permission to develop the property at this time.
Thank you.
Your woman?
As I was going to say, Ms. Spencer, in consideration for what Mr. Kidd wants, it's going to be a total determination on the findings of this property being either healthy or environmentally safe before he's totally granted the permission to
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a, there's a record of a finding, and we spoke about this, there's a record of a finding, so I can't, I won't, wouldn't be able to give any permissions. And my, the building permitting function is within my office, so it's, there's no chance of it falling through a crack.
His progress is basically a standstill until it's totally finalized as to the environmental safety or hazard conditions of the property.
If he were to come into my office and say, "I want to give a conceptual site plan in case it is clear," I would at least engage in reviewing that, so it's not a complete standstill. But as far as turning ground, yeah, he would not be able to do that.
Ms. Spencer, what is the, it seems like to me that we're missing a key piece of information here, and I know that you're following, you're only following your protocols for the part of it that your office handles. It seems like we're putting cart before a horse, almost. Am I, am I correct or incorrect?
No, I mean, it's, it's really not cart before horse. It's, and any zoning is going to have site-specific conditions that have to be reviewed before any kind of development could happen.
So, it really doesn't matter the condition of the land?
That's correct. In this, in this case, yeah.
So, what we're really considering is, do we, in our estimation, does this fit with the flavor of the neighborhood or the, so the milieu of the neighborhood and the purpose for which the applicant is making request?
It's the use
Right.
Of the property, and whether that's in keeping with the area.
Right.
Carrie, is limited industrial the best, I mean, I know you evaluate it, is that the best zoning for what Mr. Kidd is wanting to do in particular?
For, for what he's, excuse me, wanting to doing, that is the lowest-intensity zoning district that includes this use. The way to make it less intense would be to impose additional conditions, additional use conditions.
Carrie, when was the last time that this was rezoned, prior to this?
Just with the, with the adoption of the ordinance, it's just, it's residential. Or, I guess, yes, in the
Mr. Kidd, you have an opportunity for rebuttal of any of the arguments you've heard, if you'd like an opportunity to do so.
I have a couple more questions.
I was aware of none of the problems that these folks have. I don't know nothing about the way the land lays. I just bought the property, I want to build my little business there. I'm not coming up there spraying paint every day and night. I don't want to do that. It's not my intention. All I'm going to do is store my equipment, come in there, maybe build a little hobbies and stuff, and that's all I'm going to do. I have no desire to bring toxins or anything else on that property. My main objective is to clean the property up. That's why the people came out there today. And whether you called them or you called them, it doesn't matter. I don't care. I want it cleaned. I don't want to have a mess. That, I want to have a nice, clean environment, and I know y'all might not want to look at a building up there. And I'm not trying to, if I do, I'm going to have trees and leylands all around the place. That's my objective is. I don't want a mess. I'm trying to get away from that. I don't have it where I'm at, because I live on Seven Acres, and I have a beautiful law home, and I'm not trying to come up there and start anything else. I'm not coming up there to have a pile of junk. I'm too old for it. You know, that's just the way I'm trying to, I want to retire one day, and if I can come up there and build a birdhouse, that's what I want to do, you know? That's my objective. I fool with a few little cars and trucks, you know, but that's about it. Hoover lives behind me. Is that your place?
This James Wells.
Well, he seems like he has a lot of cars. Somebody there, yeah. Somebody there has a lot of vehicles, but
Lives behind me.
Yeah, so I, I don't care what that man did, that's his business, and I understand you have a love for horses. I have animals also, and I wouldn't want to do nothing to hurt nobody's animals. I love my dogs, and you probably love your horses the same way, and I'm not here to do that. I'm not about that. I'm a very loving person. Ask my wife.
Well, I don't, I'm not trying to get, get a cost problem.
Right, no one
I do need to explain the reasons why we feel so strongly about this.
Right.
These are, this is all residential. These homes are our lot. We are, none of us are millionaires. We are working-class people.
And I am also.
And most of the people are retired. I'm a nurse, and I am still a nurse. But I do not want, I do not want the environment, as well as the property values, as well as the horses and the general feeling of the people there, to have to deal with something that turns from a residential place into a light-industrial place. Because if one person comes in with a light industrial, that is a catalyst for additional people.
Ma'am, I don't mean to cut you off, but he's here to answer, to speak to the board
about your concerns. Go ahead, sir.
Like I say, all I'm trying to do is run my business. I don't want no headache with nobody. Last thing I want is grief. And these problems that these people have, to be honest with you, that place has been there for 30, 40 years. If they had problems, I would think they would have addressed them before, long before I come along. I mean, that's just the way I look at things, and that's just black and white to me. I didn't, I didn't cause none of these problems. Matter of fact, I'm having to absorb these problems, and it's going to cost me money to clean up that site. And there's no telling, whatever they find, it's on me. It's not on the other owner. The state of North Carolina requires that Hoover owns the property now, has to clean up the property, and has to pay for it. Even if the EPA steps in, it's going to cost me money.
Understood.
Mr. Kidd, I have a couple of questions, follow-up questions here. In this 25 or 30 by 40 building that you're going to build, can you explain just a little bit about exactly what this building is going to be? Are there going to be, will you have a bathroom in there? Will there be rooms? Or is it just going to be an open shop with
It's, it has two garage doors on both, one on each end. I'm going to have an office there to run my little business. I'll probably have a bathroom, because I already have a septic tank and water on the property, so that's a given. And I'm going to have shelving in there for my equipment, and I have motorcycles. I do ride motorcycles, and I'll probably store my motorcycles there also. And that's about it. It's usually, it's going to be mostly for storage and just for what I do.
What kind of motorcycles do you have?
Nice ones. Well, they're, I have a, what do you mean, what kind?
I hope you're only asking that in case your motorcycle fits.
They're Harley-Davidsons, does that mean anything?
That's, that was mine.
I hope that's a plus.
They're Harley-Davidsons, then.
I've got a, I fool, I have one Japanese bike that I'm restored, but a guy in Virginia's doing that, so there's nothing there that's going to do that, but I have, I have two or three Harleys.
Okay. And you plan to keep your two or three Harleys there?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, you can go up and ask to ride them, Julie.
If you can ride, you can ride.
Any other questions for Mr. Kidd?
I have a question. Just a final question. You do feel that to bring your business in, that the environmental, environment will be safe, healthy, whatever it takes to get that area cleaned up, right?
Yes, sir. I feel like the property, if anything, it's going to increase in value. It's not going to decrease. I'm not there for that.
That's good. That's great.
I mean, you put a building on a lot and clean up the area and shrubbery and so forth, and I'm going to have concrete there eventually. I've got to have concrete for the building, of course, and my driveway, it's got, I'm going to probably put concrete out so far. But that's, that's my objective, yes, sir. I mean, it takes time, but I'm getting there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any discussion, board members?
I do need to ask a clarifying question. At one time, about 30 years ago, I lived at 984 Eden Road.
All right, close to that intersection?
Yes.
That's right. Okay, are you asking if there's a conflict?
Is that a conflict?
You don't live there? Do you own the property?
No.
There's no financial gain to be, to be had?
I just lived there at one point in time. I just, I know the neighborhood.
Okay, but there isn't a familial or close familiar, familiar or familial relationship with the property itself and with the gentleman asking for the owner?
No.
Then you are not in conflict.
Thank you.
I guess, and this is a nurturing thing to say, I guess. You, you can, you can choose, you know, to feel uncomfortable with it, or you can, you can also choose to be, to be not in conflict and to be objective, regardless of what you know of the property, of the neighborhood, but I appreciate you being forthcoming about it.
Thank you.
I have one last question. Mr. Kidd, when you bought the property, were you aware of the issues with the possible contaminants?
I was not. I mean, I, this is my story. When this man that bought this property, he bought it from another guy, was Calvin Thompson, Sr., he bought this property, and he did store stuff up there. And I worked for that man for eight years, I had to build that business. And I moved on and done my, you know, started my own stuff, but I did not know, he didn't fool with contaminants. He fooled with, he did have containers, and we did have barrels, but most of the things that's in them barrels is gone. But when I bought the property, it was grown, and I didn't, I didn't really reach for it.
When did you purchase, what was the purchase date?
January somewhere. I think I started in December, I finally closed on in January.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have an application before us, which requires a motion to approve or deny.
You also have the option of negotiating conditions?
I think they're listed here.
For the, for instance, a fence as a landscape buffer that won't be given. Anything that he's offered, such as hours of operation, hazardous material, fumes, although the, the property itself will not allow any kind of hazardous materials because of its location anyway, so that wouldn't need to be any kind of condition.
I have another question for staff as well.
Yeah.
Is it possible that we could table this, this decision, possible decision, until we can find out more about the EPA or the assessment on the water?
I would, I would advise you not to, because the, your, for you to make your rezoning decision based on a non-zoning-related issue would be a bit of a slippery slope. And to trust the, those regulatory agencies and myself and other staff to follow through on that. I suppose that could be a condition of rezoning, that the, no, because it's, because it's, let's not even go there, it gets too slippery.
No, we don't want to bring that in.
Yep, same slope.
Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I recommend we deny the zoning amendment before the board. The board hereby adopts the following statements as required by NCGS 153A-341. The board has determined that the zoning amendment is not consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan, because the area is not appropriate for the proposed land use, and the proposed land use is not consistent with all of the development maps, plans, and maps or plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The board has determined that the zoning amendment is not consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. As a whole, this zoning amendment does not support the intent and descriptions of the urban transition land class.
Mr. Chair, I would second it.
We have a motion made and seconded that the planning board deny this application. All in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The motion is defeated by The motion is defeated by a vote of three to two, and the application is approved.
Actually, you need an alternate motion on the, on the floor. That, that motion is not supported, so some, it is up to somebody to propose an alternate motion, or a different motion.
I move that the planning board?
It's in the staff report.
I'm sorry?
It's okay, it's okay, go ahead.
Carrie?
I think Mr. Stone was looking for the consistency statement, but it appears that you'll be making the motion, so, but just listen, Philip to it, so that you'll understand.
Okay, I move that the board approve the application and adopt the following statements as required by North Carolina General Statute, Section The board has determined that the zoning amendment is consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. The proposed zoning amendment in case number 2020-001 is appropriate for the proposed land use and is consistent with all of the MAPS plans officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The board has determined that the zoning amendment is consistent with the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. As a whole, this zoning amendment supports the intent and description of the urban transition land class, and that the following conditions shall apply.
Now, if you, you can just enter that, his list into the record, or use that and suggest others?
Okay, well, we'll incorporate his restrictions by reference, and further state that no development will be permitted before the approval of a site plan indicating compliance with the site design and landscaping requirements for non-residential zoning districts, North Carolina Department of Transportation driveway permit, and appropriate building permits. It is the recommendation of the board that the rezoning request meets the general intent of the land use plan with the conditions offered and incorporated by reference, and will fit within the context of current uses in the local community due to its proximity to a longstanding industrial-type business in the neighborhood. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The motion is carried by a vote of three to two.
Emily, the vote is just the opposite, I don't know if you saw. The, the vote was, oh, seconded, who seconded it, was it Philip? Okay, Mr. Stone.
Philip did.
Remind the audience about the final decision, if you might.
Yeah, I'm looking forward here, so here it is.
Okay.
You folks should all bear in mind that, and we're going to repeat ourselves here, that this vote that was just taken is subject to approval by the county commissioners, and there'll be a public meeting held on this issue on March 16th, right here at the same location. And if you have any concerns about the vote that was taken tonight, you can express your arguments to county commissioners.
We'll be sending another postcard mailer reminding about that meeting, which starts at 6:30 instead of 7:00.
Their meetings start a little earlier than this one. Yes, sir. Mr. Darnell, right?
Yeah, Rocky Darnell. In 1990, my property, I didn't have the acreage that I have now. I was going to put in, I put in a 30 by 40 steel building, and I was going to do car work on the side, but I wanted to do it residential, so I bought, had to buy over three acres of land to be able to have my permits and do everything that I needed to do on my business. Well, just as I was fixing to do all this, I had done, got my tax ID number, done had my business name, I just hadn't formally come to this building and paid the fees that I needed to pay. Well, I had a heart problem, I had five bypasses, so I put all this behind me, still got my buildings, and I had to buy all the property, because they said I had to have over three acres of land to be able to do that in that area. Now, we're looking at 1.3 acres.
Sir.
Nine.
1.9 acres.
Well, 1.9 acres, and I had to buy almost four acres of land to be able to do the same thing that he's doing.
He didn't have to go through, it was a rural family occupation, so you didn't have to go through the rezoning, this is actually?
Yeah, I was going business.
Yeah, this is a stricter, so he was going to live on the property, correct?
Yes, I was going to live on the property, no.
So this is actually a stricter process than he would have ultimately gone through for the, that's why this is being rezoned, because it's a smaller property and, or requested to be rezoned.
Well, why couldn't I have mine rezoned, so I may have to buy all this other property and pay all these taxes all these years?
I don't know that somebody might have given you that option, apparently didn't give you that option.
Yeah, they did in the office right over.
To rezone it, I mean.
Mm-hmm. They told me I had to have that to be able to do.
Let's, yeah. I mean, and I can speak to you more, because now we're off topic, but.
Okay, next item on agenda is all business, which according to this, we have none. Do you have any updates for us, Carrie?
There are three applications for our zoning board, our planning board vacancies, excuse me for always calling you zoning, it's such a typical.
Are we still looking for people?
We are, and there are three applicants from the Citizens Academy that actually have applied and will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their next meeting.
Oh, good.
So we won't have to be scrambling quite as much and bothering you so much about getting for them.
Are they spread out geographically, or are they often?
They're, they're.
They're not all from Eaton.
No, no.
Got too many people from Eaton.
But, but because of that, we've talked about training before, but this is, it's a, the timing is, is good, I was hoping that we'd fill the board before we engaged in a lot of training, so this will be, this will be very good, and we can do some, some training, John and I talked about that today.
Great.
Pardon?
I know we're still a long way out on the, on the land use plan.
Yeah, the, the consultant, Destination by Design, has finished their interviews, I haven't seen the results of them. They've, they've made several maps, just to sort of heat map out what's out there. They've started on the development ordinance, and I think they're working, it feels like wheels are really turning in the background, but they are going to have, the committee's having a meeting. I believe it's a meeting this month. Yes, there is a meeting next week. Well, they'll be presenting, or what they've done today, and I'll be able to give you more information.
Do I hear a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second, okay, all in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. The meeting is adjourned.